All right. I'd like to open the zoning Board of Appeals meeting for July 17th, 2019. And the first order of business is to review the minutes of the meeting for June 19th, 2019. Did everybody have an opportunity to review the meeting minutes for June 19th, 2019?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, or corrections?
No.
Okay.
I just have one, Chris. The first paragraph on Stout.
Yes.
It talks about subdivision between the village and the town, which really doesn't make sense unless we say somewhere that we're talking about subdividing. The problem is the deed contains both parcels, right? So I think that's...
This is Matthews. This is Matthews.
Stout.
They're the same thing.
Okay.
Matthews, the owner, Stout, the applicant.
Yes.
And more than likely will be withdrawing our application because the DEC has said because he has land in the village, that it's part of the same deed, he can move his house. So he's probably going to put the house, and he's going to be here. We're not on the first, so...
All right, we're just doing the minutes now.
Well, we'll get to it.
Okay.
That's good to know.
So, Chris, I was just, somewhere in here, we should just talk about subdividing. How do you say it, how the deed subdivides the parcels? The parcels regardless of political background or something like that? I don't know how to...
Can't you just say subdividing for now?
Well, that's what it says. But it's unclear because, of course, you can't have a tax parcel that's in both town and the village.
I know. But it doesn't lend itself to a simple correction.
Okay.
I mean, you either have to go all in completely or even it's subdivided. Given what possible future of the septication... Perhaps we should just leave the minutes as it is.
Simply maybe...
Okay. I retract my statement. I will make a motion that we accept the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. And the next order of business is Kufner, which is on for 7:45, so a little early. But I think we will take out of turn the Stout matter.
I'm here.
That would be you?
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to come up and explain to us what's the purpose of the last meeting? And we're going to go from there.
As I just mentioned, when I interrupted your reading of your minutes, I apologize. Mr. Stout has been applying to the DEC for a permit to build the dwelling that he wanted to put on this property in the town, in the wetland adjacent area. And the DEC notified him and said, "We see that this land goes beyond just the village's line, that you actually own..." The parcel, he doesn't own. Mr. Matthews owned it. That the parcel he wished to purchase, although it is in two grid parcels, partly for the village land and partly for the town land, that it is one deed parcel. And therefore, he does have the ability to move the house out of the adjacent area of wetland. And that's what the DEC has basically said, "We're not going to grant you this permit because you have the ability not to hack to disturb the wetland." And so, he and I have discussed it a little bit. He's talked to his engineer. He does have a plan that he will be bringing tonight. Of course, I told him we were first on the agenda, so he wasn't playing around here at the start. That shows the house moved out of the adjacent area. The septic design was never in the adjacent area. And the DEC now becomes, they're out of the picture because we're not impacting the adjacent area of the wetland. So what his application, the variance that he requested, well, was requesting, had to do with setbacks and lot coverage and that sort of, not lot coverage, but the fact that it's a less than 10-acre lot in a 10-acre zone, which I think, my question now, kind of goes either to the zoning enforcement officer or this board. Does he require a variance to build on a substandard lot, would be considered a substandard lot? Because it is a lot of record. And he does plan on building, as I say, the house will cross the village-town line. That part of the house is the village, part of the town. Because otherwise, he's restricted from using his town property altogether. So he would, you know, move the house out of the adjacent area. But does that then require a variance? Or would it be considered a lot of record that he could then get a built-in permit from the building department without having to go for any variances? So since we were already on the agenda, we decided we would come and discuss it with the board and see where it goes from here.
So I'm sorry, you're saying the house would need to be built on strata in the border?
It would strata the border. There's no reason why it can't.
Well, physically, right.
You can't.
Sorry, I prefer to mark, show you something, you know, you can build half a house in the town and half a house in the village.
And so they wouldn't be subdividing the lot?
No. They basically have said that he would not be able to build on the town portion, so there would be no ability to subdivide the lot because he couldn't create a building on. So it kind of becomes unnecessary.
I mean, does it change so much that a new application should be filed, or is the amendment?
I would assume that we're going to need to file an application.
I think you have to do that.
I was just wondering if we needed to file an application at all. If the, because it's a lot of record, does that give him the right to build on it, even though it's less than 10 acres?
Perhaps you withdraw this application and go back to the zoning enforcement officer's and determine that...
If he meant all the setbacks and everything now that they've moved the house...
He would amend it.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
He's still not going to have the lot with, and the lot front of the fire within the town, because none of the town dimensions have changed.
Would they still need, would he still need a side variance if he's building right on?
No, because the village, no, because that's not a property line. Your variance, your setback is from a property line. And you're looking at the village-town line as a political division, not a property line. So the only side yard setback he needs is from the village's line. And he clearly has more than 10 feet that the village would require.
Well, the only thing I would say is that, since you did a lot of work already to kind of, to get here, I'm just noodling, Marie.
That's fine.
But it might be worthwhile in just, I'm thinking ahead, I guess, to the time when your client decides to sell the property. It might be nice to just have a record as EBA decision that, you know, I guess a ZDO determination might cover that. I don't know. I think you have to go back to the ZDO. That's kind of my, I think it's clear if you withdraw this application and then start a new... Yes. But if this, I guess I'm trying to figure out ways, if this application is going to stay here, to not go backward, you know, not go too far backwards. I mean, there's already a lot cited, you know, going ahead with a, we have had other applications where, not under the present zoning enforcement officer, but under the previous zoning enforcement officer, where people applied for a number of variances of the board that were making the decision midstream that those variances weren't required. And one possibility is to just drop off everything but the minimum lot size, or whatever, anybody, whatever variant, and proceed as a revised application. And then in the meantime, without taking it off the board's agenda, and then in the meantime, you guys can talk to Michelle and see. I mean, if she's quite confident that it doesn't have to be here, then you can always back up then. But then you wouldn't have made any decisions tonight that pushes this backwards. And you can always drop off. So we'll put it over for the next hearing date. Does that sound good? And then in the meantime, in the next 30 days or whatever, you'll be able to determine whether you need to be here at all, or whether there needs to be some kind of amendment of the application. Right. And you're still...
Okay, that sounds...
So is that fair?
Yes, I think it is.
We'll put you open until, you're still in the queue yet?
August 21st.
August 21st, does that sound...
You would need it a couple of weeks before that. That's, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll put you open until August 21st. Does that sound reasonable?
That sounds very reasonable. All right, I thank you.
Great, thank you, Marie.
Thanks.
Richard, do you have the resolution?
Yes.
Maybe we can do that, because we still have about five minutes before...
Well, do you want to go back to the cup, or...
That's on for 7:45.
Oh, 7:45. Oh, I thought it was 7:45.
All right. On ZDA case number 981, Jerry Irwazutin, I drafted a resolution. David and Kim made suggested changes. I went through both. I have Kim's clean version, as you called it, and that's fine with me. I could read that, but I have not incorporated David's changes into Kim's. David's changes are fine, too. So I can accept either one. But to go through the comparison of the two suggested changes with mine, the third, I'm not sure how I would do that.
Well, how substantive are the changes?
Well, the only substantive one I have was really toward the end, when you were reaching the conclusion.
Okay.
If I recall correctly. I don't have a...
I do.
Because there seemed to be both some grammar and, I don't know, conceptual issue that, that needed to be straightened out.
Well, yeah.
Kim, did you get a chance to see David's suggestions on...
I started looking at Dave's suggestions, but I was kind of, because I think it was based on the word, was it based on the one that I had sent around?
No.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of hard...
You sent a text version, once I pulled into Word.
So I had started kind of looking, most of the changes I had seen were fine. They didn't seem as substantive as mine comments in the beginning. My comments in the beginning were more for clarity purposes and just to kind of provide a better understanding, like particularly on the description of the proposed project.
Okay, so...
For everyone else, this is where the barn is being converted to the primary residence, and the cottage, which is attached to the barn, will be coming in as a dwelling.
So, Kim, it looks like you have mine there?
This is, this is actually mine.
That's yours, okay. Well, how about a compromise? We do all of your changes, but then just look at section one, after now, therefore? For mine, that's really, it's just that one paragraph, I think, that tries to make sense of that.
All right, David, I'm going to start reading this, so maybe show that to Kim.
Yeah, if I could just...
And then I'll do Jerry. Resolution, and this is Kim's first. Resolution of the Town of Reinbeck, ZBAA, the matter of the area lands, Jerry Irwazutin, ZBAA case number 981. Whereas, applicant, the applicant is Paul Tirons, and today representing the owner. I'm here in amper for the owner. This is appeal from the Town of Reinbeck zoning administrator's determination letter dated April 17th, 2019. Property is bought, is located at 476 42 Route 308, Reinbeck, New York, which bears the parcel number contained in the resolution. The applicant's property is 8.18 acres and is located in RC 5, zoning district. The owner is represented by Paul Tirons before this board. The property has an existing historical structure, the Grove Shiler Tenant House, and a large barn that is connected to the cottage. Currently, the owner resides in the historic structure, existing residence. He proposes to convert the cottage into his primary structure. He proposes to convert the barn into his primary structure. The existing residence will then be converted to an accessory structure. Given the existing size of the existing residence, a variance is required to accommodate the change in maximum permitted square footage for his accessory dwelling unit. There's only one variance required here. The existing residence that will be converted to an accessory structure is 1,500 square feet, and the maximum allowed in code is 900. So there's a variance being requested of 600 square feet for the accessory building. Timeliness of the appeal, the applicant filed an appeal with the ZBAA on April 25th of this year and has paid the requisite fee. Appeals were filed within 60 days of the ZDO's decision appealed from, and thus, the application is timely as required by the law. On May 15th, 2019, this board deemed the application to be complete, subject to receiving the site plan application currently before the Reinbeck Planning Board. The applicant provided the ZDA plans for septic plans and site plan on June 21st, 2019. The Reinbeck Planning Board is the lead agency, and they defer environmental view to the planning board. And that planning board met a few days ago on July 15th, and they determined that it is a type-two action under CEPR. No further action required. The application was approved by the Reinbeck Planning Board. Douglas County Planning Board was not required, Town of Planning, the planning board was required, and it was sent to them for a referral, and they responded. Planning Board recommended that ZBAA rely upon its own study of the facts and decide the application in accordance with the criteria and proceed to set forth in the town code, including the input of NAF as a planning board found the requested area variance raised no significance planning or environmental issues. The Reinbeck CAB, their referral was not applicable, nor was the Reinbeck Waterfront Advisory Committee, so nothing was sent over to them. Site visit on July 6th of this year, I visited the owner's property and the surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment, and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The purpose of this site visit was to observe the property and the surrounding area and to inform the board members for the upcoming decision. The site visit was conducted solely to gather information. There were no business deliberations. Public hearing, a public hearing on this bill was duly advertised and held at the Town Hall on June 19th. There were no comments from the public. The hearing was closed. However, Paul Tirons, applicant, agreed to extend the time to a resident, render a decision if needed by the ZBAA, but that deed did not lie, so it has not been extended, because the planning board rendered its decision on July 15th. Balancing test. In our review of the variance, so we have considered the benefit of the applicant and the area variance is granted as weight against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. We determined that the variance requested should be granted because there is no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by granting this variance. Consideration of the five factor in the balancing test. In our view of the variances, of the variance, it's only one variance sought, we have considered the five factors required by 125124C1 of the Town of Reinbeck Zone Law as follows: A. If the variance is granted, it will cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties. Do you find this, the answer would be no. The cottage that would be converted to a residence and existing residence that will be designated an accessory dwelling already exists on the property, converted will preserve the barn, and the present character will remain, most likely be upgraded. Can benefits sought by have be achieved by some of the methods feasible for the appellate to pursue other than area variance? We find the answer to this question is no. Structures already in existence, these existing residents to be converted to the accessory dwelling unit is currently 1,500 square feet, which exceeds the maximum square footage for an accessory dwelling unit in RC 5. To convert the existing residence to an accessory dwelling, a variance would be required regardless based on its existing size. Is the requested variance substantial? We find the answer is no. There are no additions to the buildings or their footprints. There are no major or significant alterations to the building or site. The variance is only 600 square feet, which is mitigated by the nature of the property. The character of the lots will not change. The proposal will preserve the existing barn and cottage. D. Will the existing variance have an adverse effect, I'm sorry, adverse impact or physical environmental on the, or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no. As stated above, the physical structures already exist. There will be no land disturbance. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? The answer is yes. And the owner and applicant should have been aware of existing zoning requirements. However, the proposed addition is reasonable and logical, given the recent self-protection. In addition, David, let me know when, if there's any changes, please. In addition to our review of the five factors and balancing test, we must determine if these requested variances represent... I'm on 14th, yeah?
Just read it through, and then you can correct it on the discussion.
Great. If these requested variances represent the minimum variance necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the appellate, and that also preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We find the answer to this question is yes. The barn and cottage will benefit the neighborhood and the community. Fifteen. Result of the balancing test, based on our analysis of the five factors discussed above, in the consideration of having the minimal variance request, we find the balancing test favors granting the area variance sought. Now therefore be it resolved based on the, all of the above facts described above and upon the reasoning described as follows. One, the ZBAA hereby grants the applicant one area variance for an accessory dwelling unit over 900 square feet for a total of 1,500 square feet. The structure in which the applicant seeks to use an accessory dwelling is already on the property, so benefit received by the applicant outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. Our decision is supported by a balancing of the factors discussed above. For this reason, we find the benefit to the applicant in receiving this variance outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community or the neighborhood. David, I think I, did I repeat that? Is I, I'm being redundant?
Yeah, I was just tightening this up.
Good, okay.
I guess John is suggesting I just say it after you're done.
Okay. Section two, the ZBAA hereby grants the variance from Zone 4012517777, as noted above. Section three, the granting of this variance does not dissolve the applicant for having to secure any other, it does not absolve him from recuing, requiring him to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. And finally, the area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed use of this exhibit are initiated within one year. So things have to begin within one year, I think. That's it.
So I'm just proposing add it to section one, under now, therefore be it resolved. So that we'll read, "ZBAA hereby grants the applicant an area variance of 600 feet to enlarge the accessory dwelling." Period. Decision to grant this variance is supported by the balancing of the factors discussed above. We find that the benefit to the applicant in receiving this variance, and our estimate is as well.
Okay. My suggestion is if you could circle that, and Kim, if you could incorporate that, please, in your final resolution.
Make it 600 square feet.
That was plus the feet.
Is that what I said?
600 feet.
600 square feet, correct. I read it wrong.
And just another thing, do we usually put on a boilerplate saying that the applicant has to build in conformity with the, the application? If we typically do something along those lines, so it would add that...
They're not building anything, though.
They're renovating, they're a very large barn.
If something like, say, there was a protrusion or something different happened, we want...
I don't see the harm.
Yeah, we typically put that, we want to make sure that they build in conformity with the application here. So there's...
But, Kim, there's no plans for the renovation, so...
Okay. We would...
There were plans to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and typically we ask for them, because I'm pretty sure there were plans that we wanted to keep to what we have, what they proposed, no harm. There's no harm in that.
Nope.
Maybe it's overkill. All right.
I just have a few more things that I saw. Under 13E, the self-created hardship, the last sentence is how the proposed addition is reasonable. So I would change addition to renovation, since there's not really an addition.
Right.
And then section two, under the now, therefore, I think the variance being granted from section 125-68E4. That's the one that's...
That's two? Is that section two?
Yeah, section two says, "ZBAA hereby grants variance from zoning law section," and it's not 27. It's 125-68, section E, subsection four.
Thank you.
And since Kim pointed out, addition should become renovation, just do that globally, because I think there are like three or four others, too.
Comments, concerns? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this resolution, 981, as amended.
Second.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion, any further discussion about the resolution? No. Paul, please.
Tim Alba.
Richard Malusis.
Yes, I...
Captain Clark. Captain Clark.
Yes.
It's eight o'clock.
Okay. All right, we're on to Kufner. Come on up.
Good evening. This board is well aware of the project at this point, so I'm not going to rehash many of the details, since you've had them for several months now. I represent Gerald and Stephanie Kufner, who are applying for four area variances relating to the size and number of accessory structures at the property. We believe, based on the variance, following the variance balancing test, that the grant of these variances warranted. At the last meeting, we kept the public hearing open to allow neighbors more time to look at the plans and then respond. And I think an appropriate use of our time would be to allow the neighbors to say their comments and then they could respond.
Sure. And is there anyone here for that application?
Yes.
Okay. The way this works is, this is a public hearing, so if you have any questions, concerns, statements, if you could please come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and whatever questions, concerns, and comments you have.
Christopher Lipscomb resides at 17 Manscany Drive. We reside directly above the subject property in a historic house. And as I mentioned, I think of the last meeting, I had some concerns seeing the plans. Wanted to review them with Dr. Kufner, which we have done.
Good.
We had a good discussion, but I think we realized that there were some changes that needed to be made to mitigate light, noise, and other pollution. And also, there's the issue of the fact that electricity to the subject property is actually deliberate here, our wires over our property, and there might be some potential liability from that, so... I think we talked about some possible changes, but nothing has been met two days ago, because it was out of country. We'd like to proceed with those conversations and try to come up with a solution.
And just briefly, can you state what the changes concern?
Perhaps relocating some of the additions north, so that it's hidden from, for a few of our houses, and a couple of other things that would be technical in nature, like heating type and how to deal with the electrical load. Because if you have two houses, and we're using wires that were put in place in 1908, so they're not really adequate. Because if you have two houses, and we're using wires that were put in place in 1908, so they're not really adequate for what we have now, so.
What was facing, to face north?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned facing north.
No, relocating some of the addition to the north side of the building.
So it's out of his viewshed?
Right.
Thank you.
That's, I mean, that's all I can really say at this point until.
Right, is there a response from the applicant as to those suggested changes?
First of all, I would like to thank Chris and Wendy to come by and look at it. And we talked about mitigating factors, and putting it to the north side is a problem because there is the septic tank, the water line comes into the house from that side. There's a chimney, and the electric panel is there too. So I also suggested to, because the lights are a problem, to maybe install shades that automatically bring down or come on with a light sensitive mechanism that come down as soon as the, the lighting is outside. And shielding all potential lights that are on the outside. These are the east and south. And also have a switch there, it's a time switch. In summer, it's not an issue, but in winter, somebody may forget a porch light, and it's on and it's off. So I still prefer the, the south side, because we looked at all other possibilities in order to have as little variance as possible. We have that setback also. And, you know, to the west, there's the leash. To the east, there is a big ledge around, and to the north of it, there's all the utility, the septic tank and so forth. So we were also talking about the possibility of just essentially making the height of the building a bit lower so it's less visible. It's, it's not visible in the summertime, it's, in the winter, you can see it through the trees and probably the lights. And hopefully, with these mitigating actions, we could reduce the impact. One other thing I would like to mention is that apparently the existing house solicited is having two bedrooms. There are two rooms in there. If two of these were bedrooms and the other ones, considering the study, we will not increase the amount, the number of rooms, bedrooms, or any other ones in, in the, the apartment. Yeah?
I guess, I'm just thinking out loud and just wondering whether you two maybe need a little bit more time to try to get something that's agreeable to both of you. And not that I want to delay this any longer, because I know there has been a delay, because there had to be an amendment to the application. I think we discovered an additional variance was required or something like that, if memory serves me correctly. What are your thoughts about, and I asked John and everybody else, your thoughts about putting it over to the next meeting so that you two have an opportunity to come to an agreement to some changes that you both feel comfortable with, which I think would be helpful to the board in dealing with a resolution. It's always a lot easier for us to consider variances when there's been an agreement between the neighbor and the applicant.
Yeah. But there's one more thing, there's going to be a site plan review as well. And initially, we thought that was special for August 19th.
Okay, so that means that waiting is not a bad thing. I don't know that the planning boards have to change your site plan, but you might as well, if you get a variance, you might as well get a variance that matches what's on your site plan. You know what I mean?
Yeah, that, that is another good reason for putting it over, because if there is a change on the site plan that's in front of the planning board on the 19th.
Then your time here is wasted, you know, because you end up coming back here, so.
So are you going to do a site visit?
I will probably do a site, because I think a couple of the board members will do a site.
I will.
But I think it makes the most sense to do that, once you've worked out as many differences as possible.
Or not.
Or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, I think
I think it's, it's hard to do this here, right?
Yeah, and I think it's, if Mr. Lipscomb is amenable, I think it would be good for the board members to visit his property as well.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And we can all coordinate it, all just together, through one's
They only require coffee and dough.
Should we do the site visit through Mr. Logue, through you?
I think if you're coordinating with the property owners, it's probably easier just to contact them directly, now that they're both in the country.
All right, if you could send an email to Chris, and then she could send it to us, so that we could begin to set up.
Sure.
Because I have your contact information for a site visit.
Yeah, I'll provide that.
Please, and then we'll email you directly and try to coordinate everyone together.
And ideally having the two of you together and just kind of going through it together, it would be helpful.
Best for us.
Sure.
Of course, it's the summertime anyway, do the best that we can. So, thinking ahead, just in the spirit of keeping all this moving, if you're able to reach an agreement on a plan that's mutually satisfactory to both of you, that's great. The board can move forward with that plan. If you're not able to agree, then I think what the board's going to want to know from you, if you could provide the board with something that explains why you're not able to agree. You mentioned some site constraints tonight, just so that they have the information. In other words, if they're, if the board ends up being in a position of having to say yes or no, they need all the information that's germane to that subject. And if you're not able to agree, Mr. Lipscomb, if you can also say, you know, these are what my remaining concerns are about the impact, just so the board knows exactly where things stand, and then the board can go ahead and make a decision. But, and then remember just to keep your planning board piece of this, so that everything dovetails.
Because they might drive somewhere far as to get
Yes.
Can I do have a question to Mr. Lipscomb? Can you see the, the current building now from your balcony? Okay, and so
Even open some of it.
Okay, and so building it out, you'll see the addition from the building?
Most definitely, based on what's here. Because it's taller and it's more into our viewshed.
Okay, thank you.
And when they built our house, they actually located the carriage house for it before the mile away behind a ridge, so that it could be seen, it was pretty much sited there for its empty natural viewshed, so.
Scott, you mentioned an additional variance request. Back in May, we had four, and Kim, I think we have four. There's another one.
I think what Scott, initially it was two, and then there was
Two or four, yeah, that's what I was getting at, that was, each answer is true.
The latest determination was just saying that it had to be to the planning, based on the historical structure.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we're all in agreement that we can put this over to the next meeting, which is the 21st. And by then, hopefully we'll have done a site visit, you, hopefully we'll come to something you can agree on, both of you. And you'll, you will have been in front of the planning board, so we'll have that input as well. Does that sound agreeable, or?
Yeah, we have to resolve it.
Right. Well, it's always great to resolve it when everybody's happy. We like that.
Yeah, hopefully we can
It doesn't happen often, but we like that.
But it is very nice, one of the things that's very nice about where we live is that we have seen many instances of people willing to talk together, which you both are doing, which is really terrific.
It's nice.
Thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
Okay, so we'll see you back here on the 21st, we'll probably see you before then.
And, and then we'll make a motion to continue.
So I make a motion at this point to continue the public hearing.
Second.
August 21st, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll see you soon. All right, thank you. Is there anyone here on Bariski?
I know Chris sent an email today, which was an old email from Helen Turk, the CEO, just questioning what they were going to do about the, I guess it was the the violations, as far as I know, no formal violations have been issued by the government. But there's also been no response from the applicants. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
No, no response to Michelle's email?
No, nothing, nothing.
And I guess Chris said they also didn't, they weren't at the planning board meeting.
No.
Okay, so we just put it over till the next meeting?
Yeah.
I think that's part of your
Thank you.
So, can I say something about this? This is reminiscent of the ruling, ruling, Serukis, yeah. I, I think that the board should consider a policy, I don't know whether we'd have to change the zoning law, but, I don't know, like X number of no-shows in a row and no responses from, increase from the clerk means you, you know, will pay off the escrow, give you back the balance, and you can start over when you have more interest.
Right, and I, I don't disagree with that. I think the other matter was much worse, it had gone on for about a year or something.
But
But I agree with you.
This is on the second.
But it's time that Chris ends up spending, you know, trying to run it down and find out what's going on. So I think the applicants have a responsibility to keep the ball spinning up the board.
I agree.
Agreed.
All right, so, but in the interim, I just make a motion that we put the matter over till the 21st. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is the Plack matter, and I know that we tried to arrange a site visit for Sunday, what was it, the 14th?
Last, last Sunday.
Last Sunday. And it fell apart. No fault of anybody, but it just didn't happen.
Yeah, well, what happened was that there are four vans that are owned by Mr. Plack, and one is currently being serviced, and he thought it would be best for the ZBA to see all vans on the property.
I agree.
So that's why he, he was hoping to have it back by Sunday, and it's still being serviced, so he'll reach out when they're back.
So in the interim, I think we should probably do the same thing as we have done in the other two applications, and that's put that over till the 21st, to give us the opportunity to go out there and do our site visit. It's an important application. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye.
Is the meeting, the public hearing, still open?
Yes, until the 21st. All right, and then the last thing appears to be Hudson Valley, Rhinebeck, the Rock Lodge, is
They've asked to, they're currently before the planning board. I believe the next time they're before the planning board, August 5th, so at the last meeting, you said that they would be off of this agenda, be back on after they, because we can't take any action anyway until the planning board does their secret determination, which hasn't been done yet. So they were asked to be on the 21st anyway?
So there's no need to make a motion, that's already good, though.
That's still pending, the public hearing's on the 21st, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so is there a need to make a motion to extend, or is it already good?
No, it's, it's already, it wasn't really on the
On the, yeah, okay, right. Just appeared on the paper. All right, I don't believe that there is anything else. Does anybody have any other business they would like to discuss? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, thank you.